I'm going to call to order the City of Norco's City Council and Financing Authority Regular Meeting for Wednesday, December 4th. And the Clerk will take the role.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hannah?
Mayor.
Mayor Grunmeier?
Yes.
All present.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Newton, and if you'll remain standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call up Pastor Michelle Ehrenberg from Word of Faith.
Thank you. Why do I want to say amen after the Pledge of Allegiance, right? Because it put that stamp on it, that so be it. Thank you for having me here tonight. What a blessing, what an honor. I bring you greetings from Word of Faith Fellowship and soon-to-be Cross Hill Church. We are working on permits with the city to get our new sign up, so, um, somebody, somebody help. And I bring you greetings from Pastor Dick Hillary, who is now resting in his home in Eastvale with his wife, but he had some health issues, and he greets you all, and he means so much to him. So, thank you for all that you've done to build up him and other veterans in this community. I want to read to you Psalm 106. "Give thanks to the Lord, for he is good; as love endures forever. Who can proclaim the mighty acts of the Lord, or declare his wonderful praise? Blessed are they who maintain justice, and who constantly do what is right." Let's pray. Gracious, loving Father, thank you for all those gathered here who constantly do what is right. Thank you that you have given them the authority to maintain justice and to reach people, to gather people, to connect people. Lord, we thank you for all gathered here tonight, for the abundant blessings, for life, for health, for healing. Lord, for this city that still dares to trust you. Lord, we thank you for the calling of these men and women to service, for their hard work and dedication to many, to make the world a better place. Thank you for the freedom we enjoy in this great land, and for all who have served and who have even died to make it possible. Scripture says, Lord, that we ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established them. Thank you for Mayor Grunmeier, for Mayor Pro Tem Hannah, for Councilmembers Bash, Hannah, and Hoffman, oh, and Newton. Did I say Hannah twice? I did. Lord, you know it's the end of a long day. Be with them, Lord. Bless them with wisdom and discernment, as they serve with generosity and integrity. Bless the work of their hands. Bless their thoughts and their words tonight, deepen their understanding and commitment to the people of this community. Lord, we pray for the agenda set before them. May the ideas and decisions here tonight bring glory to you and peace and prosperity to this city. We invoke your presence to this meeting tonight. Lead and guide and bless this time. Lord, in this wonderful time of year, remind us that you are the reason for the season, and give us opportunities to be a blessing to our family, our friends, our community. Lord, bless this time. Bless this council. Bless Norco, Horstown USA, and may God bless America. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. All right, well, we're to the point in the meeting that I've been waiting for all week. We are going to elect a new mayor this evening, so I'm going to check with the city clerk. Are there any cards on this item?
There are no speaker cards on this item.
All right. Yes, sir.
(Inaudible).
Okay, it's been properly moved and segmented to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Hannah to be the mayor.
Vote passes unanimous.
All right, very good. Then I'm moving out.
Appreciate that counsel, the support, and I'll try to do everything I can to keep Norco great, and I know I'll have your help on that. So, next item up is election of a mayor pro tem. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Councilman Newton, I mean Bash, I'm sorry.
Second.
I was going to nominate Robin.
We will be taking a roll call vote for this. It's broke, sorry. Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Council, um, Mayor Hannah?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Bash. Okay, if all you fellow council people will join me, we'll go down in front and send our outgoing mayor away. Okay, I want to say a few things about our outgoing mayor. You're not going far, Robin, just a few seats away, but I have a couple presentations for you. First, I want to present you with the gavel you used during your entire term as mayor, in which you led significant actions and initiatives for our community. I hope that you display it proudly, and that it commemorates your dedication to Norco. And I don't know why you got a, it's supposed to be glued on there. Why you got a, why you got a red one, everybody else gets a plain one? So, that shows your specialty, matches your flowers on your dress there. Okay, and tonight, we're starting a new tradition. We are going to officially give Mayor Grunmeier the boot. This fancy boot is filled with notes of gratitude and fond memories from your fellow council members and staff, and will stay in the city council office at City Hall until it's time to give me and future mayors the boot. It's a new way to say thanks without saying goodbye, and it's very fitting for Horstown, USA. I've got a note in there myself, but let me be the first to say thank you for your service and leadership as mayor of the City of Norco.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it is. Now, I'll let each one of the other council members have a word before you give your speech. Mayor Pro Tem Bash, you want to give your comments?
Oh.
Oh.
So, this has been actually a really great year for the City of Norco, and one of the things that you bring to the table is calm. And if I'm ever mayor again, truthfully, I'm going to copy you, because you, no, you lead one heck of a meeting. And I just think that in terms of a lot of things, that, I just think under your leadership, the city has had a very calm year. Now, a lot of things have happened, I mean, a lot of things, but I think you're just steady. And I think that's an attribute I could really learn from, but I really appreciate everything you've done, and my hope is that you're going to be sitting in these chairs for another five years. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, Robin, when I gave up the mayorship, I know how you felt. It's, it's good to get, yes. You know, the one thing, the one thing that I, one thing you did bring to the mayor, as like what Kevin said, is the calmness. And I thought what you did this last year, and even during the measure, our thing, was you put faith and trust back in the council for the residents, which I think you, that's just something you exhibit all the time. You bring the kids in here from the classes. This is our future, and you make sure that they understand what's going on. And the one thing, and I wish this room was full, is that if they know how much she really does, not only here at the council and on the dais, out in the community with the FFA kids, the 4-H kids, all the programs that you're involved in at the school, you got your boys and the family and everything, you take care of it, it's amazing what this woman has done. And she's been a perfect example of what you can do and still do a good job up here on the council. So, for that, I hope other people take your example, because you are, and have been a leading light for us. So, thank you.
You don't want me to say a word, do you? You know, Robin, that, all of us up here know that, the demands and the extra work involved with being mayor, and you've handled it with grace, and you've actually just been a very gracious mayor. I know it's going to be hard for you to sit down and not be in charge this year, but I think the biggest thing that I learned from you was another perspective on sense of community and involvement with the residents. And like I said, I think you did a spectacular job this year. So, congratulations on your freedom.
Okay, now, former Mayor Grunmeier, you might get up.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to my colleagues up here for assisting me and supporting me, same to staff and everyone. It's a learning process being on council, and definitely a learning process serving as the mayor of Norco, and I hope that I have displayed the qualities and characteristics that are important to the residents of Norco, and serve the community well. And I'm really delighted to be finishing up my mayorship. It's been interesting to me, the fact that a lot of residents and community organizations want the mayor at their events, which I understand, and it's part of our job, but I think as council members, we also need to help educate the community that all of us are equal, and we're all doing the same amount of work and with the same amount of involvement. The difference is, one person gets to come in and sign paperwork the next day, sign contracts, sign resolutions, and those types of things, but it really is a team effort of the council and the staff, making sure that this city operates the way that it does. And so, you know, in my last little bit of time on council, that will be one of the things that I will work towards, is making sure that people understand or have a better grasp of the concept of the teamwork that it takes to operate and get things done in the City of Norco. So, thank you all for your support and your kindness, and thank you for not reading three pages of things that have happened in the city this year. I appreciate that, and I look forward to moving down to the end of the row up here where I was before. So, thank you.
Twenty, yeah, twenty.
Well, yeah, Chad, and all his storm drains and streets.
Picture, 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 Ted.
Did you want me to hold the boot?
Yeah. Okay, I'll get the boot.
That boot's not made for walking.
No, it is not.
We'll get on with the city council business items. The first item is the city council communications reports, regional boards, and commissions. The PowerPoint will appear on the screens of each council member reports out, begins with the mayor pro tem.
So, the two key things that occurred with me over the last few weeks is, one, I discovered that the Norco powerhouse is scheduled to be demolition, and the, some residents over there are stating it's a crime area, and yet, I've talked to the lieutenant, and we're not finding that. But now that the Edison is involved, they, they have decided that it's an attractive nuisance. What bothers me is this process has been going on for two years, and that should have gone to our historic commission, and there should have been some discussion over it. In my next subject, you'll see why. The behavior of the state and the federal government in terms of our historic resources is criminal. There's just no getting around it. They don't follow the rules, and so, as we question them and tell them they need to follow the rules, we need to follow the rules. So, in the future, I'd really like to know if there's some historic resources that are about ready to be torn down. I want to know that we've had staff members on the site talking about it. So, I'd like to actually get a report on that, if I can, Andy, I don't even think you know about it, maybe.
I thought you were going to weigh in.
I mean, we've had our city engineers and all kinds of people have been consulted on this. I'm not saying don't tear it down, but, again, the reason supposedly is because the stats are, there's all kinds of crime in the neighborhood, and it's attracting bad people. We're not hearing that, correct, Lieutenant?
No, and we pulled a one-year history in that area, and there's only one reported crime earlier in the year. Other than that, it's all self-initiated activity that's from the deputies being in that area for the traffic coming off of north.
And again, I'm not saying it's not an attractive nuisance, but I just would like to get a full report on that, if I can, Andy. Two, as many of you know, we received a lovely letter from the Navy after getting a unanimous support from the California State Historic Preservation Commission. It went to the Navy, and basically, essentially, they said everything that we stated was not correct. I've spent, since the day before Thanksgiving, about 70 hours, literally, having to go through it and create a matrix. Nothing they're saying is correct. So, the road is one, we have to respond to it, because basically, they have stated that our consultant and the City of Norco were giving credit that belonged to other facilities to this facility, which is wrong, and that the State Historic Preservation Officer doesn't know what she's doing, nor her staff. This was the most heavily vetted nomination in the history, in the history of SHPO, State Historic Preservation Officer. It was also the thickest and the longest, because it was so politically charged, they literally, every single line was vetted and checked. Literally, every point made in that, they said was wrong. Every point. So, the strategy is, is to respond. We will go to SHPO. I don't know if we have to bring it back to council or not, I don't think so, but basically, go to SHPO, who is quite upset, and state, will you please take this to the keeper of the register yourself? We then anticipate that the Navy will turn it down, because the Navy is now interpreting a law that they have full control over what goes on in the National Register. The National Trust is looking for a test case for a Navy property. When it's turned down, our hope will be the National Trust will pick this up, and they will go to the Navy. It's very important to understand that this has nothing to do with the locals. The locals are actually just as embarrassed by this as, I mean, basically, some of the things they stated is that some of the experiments that happened there didn't happen, they did. But what's most telling is they, independent assessment is what was born there. The report says, didn't happen, and that basically, the people on this base are a bunch of pencil pushers. In fact, the language is approximate to a bunch of pencil pushers. So, my hope is we can piss off some Navy people locally, but in the meantime, we have a great relationship with the Navy. I intend to still put them up. There's two buildings that they have rehabbed architecturally, historically accurate. I intend to put them up for a state award. I think they'll win it. We get along, we have, obviously, Saturday, we have a December 7th. We get along with Tony, we know everybody. This has put everybody in a very awkward position, but it has nothing to do with them. So, as time goes on, what will happen is we're creating a matrix. I'll see to it that everybody gets the matrix, and then Andy will keep a surprise as to what happens next. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ah, Mr. Mayor. I got to get used to now saying, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoffman?
Thank you, Maryanna. I did go to a few areas, and one thing is today, I am the District 2, Zone 2, report the commissioner. And today, we had our budget workshop meeting, and just to let you know, in a little bit, $17 million is what they anticipate for capital improvement funds. And today, we listened to budget requests from the City of Corona, the City of Eastvale, the county area of Lake Matthews, along with the City of Norco. So, those are projects that will be going back to the Flood Control District to get the numbers put together, and then come back to us in February to vote on to, forward to the Board of Supervisors. Two of the areas, and I know Norco has submitted five projects, by the way, but one, two of the areas, if you drive along Interstate 15 that are really impacted, are around Tomasco Canyon, the Glen Ivy area, and Horse Steve Canyon, where they had emergency flood work. And they'll be working on those, they've worked on, already started the process. So, that also took a large amount of their budget, but I just wanted to, thank you, Mayor Hannah.
Thank you. Councilmember Grunmeier?
Went to the, turned on the light switch at the Amaze Light Festival at Silver Lakes, and if you haven't been able to go over there, it is a great family event, so if you can get over there and see that. And I'll do a little plug, the lacrosse students at Norco High School are selling discounted tickets, and it's helping them to get their uniforms, so if you still need tickets, contact Norco High School Lacrosse.
Thank you, Mayor Newton, or Councilmember Newton.
No regional meetings this past week. Thank you.
Okay. I don't mind. Before this starts, as you know, a couple of months ago, we approved a MOU with the County of Riverside Animal Services. We've been trying to get into working with those guys for years, and they had some people up above that were stopping us, but we finally, thanks to Supervisor Spiegel, we had a meeting with her, and the next week, the ball started rolling, heads started rolling, and we have an MOU, and the last two training sessions, one of them was last night, the first one I missed because I had surgery, but they brought 12 people over each night to train, and they're all real interested in us helping each other, and we're training them on how to use our equipment and what to do, so we're all excited about that. And last night was a very good session. Next time, I think we're going to go over to their yard over there and train, so we can get some more new people in, but it'll be a good deal for NART, because then we go outside the area right here, they have animal control people in just about every city in Riverside County, so we'll always have good help in there, and we appreciate the work that Brian and Frankie and everybody did on getting that MOU through there. Appreciate it. Okay, RCC, RCTC, the construction is moving right along on the 15 freeway lanes project. We didn't have a video this week to show. And vector report, as you can see up there, that West Nile cases in California was horrendous this year, and I think we had 10 in Riverside County, and humans, and 15 in horses. So, everybody needs to remember to vaccinate their horses that are, oh, there's our little, other little Mustang there, that, that's what mosquitoes do to horses, they swarm them and bite them, so that's why it's important to vaccinate them, because we've, I think this year, we picked up two horses for veterinarians, horses that were down. We picked them up with our equipment, and they can't stand, and it's all due to the West Nile, the way it affects their nerves and, say, ad ending for, for a good animal. And that's all I have to report. Thank you. Item two is city council consent items. All items listed under the consent counter are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion prior to the motion to consider any action by the council. Any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the consent counter. Items removed from the consent counter will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off of the consent counter at this time? Wait, do we have a card?
Yes, Mayor. Linda Dixon had put in a card related to consent items. Which is consent?
No, that is.
Is number four, so, public comment is four, Linda, so, three, you put consent.
Number four.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you. Moving right along, we didn't have anything pulled, so we go to item four, which is public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be ready. so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Do we have any cards?
Yes, the first speaker is Mike Williams.
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay. I don't want to yell. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mayor Hannah.
Thank you.
Council and staff, appreciate the time. Anybody here ever read that book, How to Make Friends and Influence People? Here we are. I hope I don't step on any toes, but here, first off, I want to, I want to recognize the city council, specifically their hard work and dedication. You know, guys like Greg, who is a construction expert and specialist, as far as I'm concerned, strong member of the council. Kevin, with your background in historic Norco, you're the go-to, as far as I'm concerned. Robin, lifelong educator and a strong voice in this city. Ted Hoffman, after a life of public service, and now all the hours that you donate to the city, and I don't know if you can keep track of him or not. And Berwin Hannah, as far as I'm concerned, the epitome of Western lifestyle and equestrian lifestyle, and, you know, the truest form of a cowboy, from my standpoint. Now that I'm done telling you all this, one of the things that's bothering me, and of course, I'm on the stuck commission, is the negativity from some of the residents that don't know what's going on, really. It's irritating, I have a hard time biting my lip, I really do. But, being on the stuck commission, I think you have to carry yourself above all of that. But, I think we need to do something, if possible, to get these people to change their mind. Some people will never change their mind, no matter what you do. But, I think it's up to the council, the staff, and the residents, more than anything, to get these people to see a different way here in Norco. I think when Measure R was pushed through, I think it was proof positive that with the council and the residents getting behind that, that it was successful. And I think the same kind of thing can happen for the city, generally speaking. Get these people to clean their properties up. Some neighbors that clean their properties up, and the neighbor next door looks like they're having a yard sale every day. You know, after a while, they're gonna be shamed into it. They just are, because you're gonna look around and say, "I don't want to have a trashy property, so I'm gonna clean it up." And that goes to part of what you're gonna be discussing tonight with the weed abatement and so on. Those are all part of it. Public perception is important. There's nobody here that doesn't realize that, if you go up Fourth Street, just an example, how long have those sofas and mattresses been sitting there? For a month? We need, we need to do something like, we need to take care of those things. One more thing, I would like to recommend that we have some kind of committee to help with some of this, to get the downtown Norco area, to bring people in, get people wanting to come around Norco and be part of this positive community and look for the horse, equestrian lifestyle that we are all here for anyways. So, I thank you very much for your time. Merry Christmas. Congratulations again. Thank you, Mike. Next card.
Linda Dixon.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. I want to volley a little bit on Kevin's comments on the Navy letter. Speaking for Lake Norconian Club Foundation, I found this letter very offensive. It was, had so many fallacies in it, and I'm very embarrassed for the Navy. I'm very embarrassed for the fact that they have hired very inadequate people that put forth a letter of such sort. We have a wonderful relationship with our local Navy. This is not to dog on our local Navy at all, but at the federal level, we need to do something. I would like to see this agendized. This is very serious. I would like to see the city come forth with some action, whether it be in the form of a letter, or condemnation, or whatever you decide to do on your part. And know that the Lake Norconian Club Foundation stands with you, and we go above and beyond what the cities are allowed to do, as you've known in the past. We need to preserve our historic properties, and at the same time, we need to be in partnership with our local Navy, which we currently are. And this will be evidenced this Saturday morning at December 7th. We've done this for over 10 years. We have a wonderful rapport, but this situation with this letter that came down from the Navy cannot be ignored, and I would love to see some action on this, and we do stand behind you. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further speaker cards?
No more cards. Thank you. All right, moving on to item, item five is legislative matters. No new evidence will be heard from the public, as the public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed. Item A, Mr. Attorney, that's yours.
No, just a motion.
We need a motion.
Both of these are second readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Item 5B is no discussion, simply ask for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you very much. Now, item six is city council, city manager, staff, communications. Let's see, we'll start here to my right, Mr. City Manager.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Plotting's to just get some clarification. With respect to the response letter from the Navy, most of you know that the history of the efforts that the city has been doing for many years to get the, some of the properties at the Navy to be placed on the National Register of Historic Places. We've taken it to the state, the state approved it, and moved it forward, went to the Navy, who had to make a determination, and unfortunately, their determination is that they don't agree with the state finding or the city's own finding. So, what I'd like to do, in terms of trying to determine how to move forward with this, with this item, is to have it agendized for city council discussion. It looks like we have at least completed the first phase of what we started, and now it's time to decide what our next steps in that process should be. So, I will have this agendized at a future city council meeting for, just so that we can review the background information of how we get to, how we got to where we are today, and then determine the next step that we need to follow with respect to this item. Regarding the other issue that Councilmember Bash spoke about, which is the demolition of Edison Power Station here in the city of Norco, what we are going to do from staff is we will provide some background information on that to the city council, not a city council discussion item, unless the city council decides to do that at a later date.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman.
You know, it's, it's interesting that Mike came up here and talked about communications, because when I went to the seminar and just came back from the pro rodeo seminar, their whole point was communications, and the ability to communicate, you know, to outside. So, part of the things that they talked about was imaging, your image and projection of your imaging, and how to do it. Social media, for those of us that are over 50, is probably fine, but for those youngsters like sitting over there here, they live off of Instagram. So, what I'd like to see us do is probably look at our communications, and maybe something that EDAC can look at in the future is determine how to best sell our city, and communicate, and look at it that way, Andy, if it's something you're interested in. And we do have a cable TV channel, and maybe look at the use of it. I know there's some rules about our comment, and as a city, what we do and historical facts and recording it. So, something that maybe Roger and his group can look at to maybe sell us better and actually get that communication out to the people. So, the other thing they talked about up there was, it used to be, and we're in a small community, they talked about the livestock welfare issues that were being, all the rodeos across the United States were being faced with. It used to be that these groups would work from the national level on down to the local level. Well, they've changed that status, so we, as a local city, need to beware and be in the front of it, not behind it. So, they're attacking small cities, they're not necessarily attacking the major events, and they're going after the local events, and then working on a local level and enforcing that up to the state and national level. That, they've, you can see it, that's already happened in some cities. So, I just thought us to be aware of it, it was some good information, and I will share some of the information with our NART team guys when we, our next meeting. So, thank you.
Mrs. G.
Just one thing, I would like, and I don't know if this is a staff item or a council item, but I would like to have some discussion on certificate and plaque protocols, and if we can look at having something other than certificates for presentation purposes. I don't know that certificates are always the most appropriate item to present every time we go to something, so if staff would like to take that up and then report back, but if that's pins, or coins, or, yeah, whatever. But, just looking at it from the perspective of staff time, the money spent on the items and that kind of stuff, so, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Just one item, next Wednesday, the 11th, we're hosting our open house here next door at the, the office from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Unfortunately, we invited him, he will be in San Francisco for a conference that day.
Chief?
Nothing.
Lizette? No money reports tonight or anything? Mr. Petrie?
I just, reminder, Pearl Harbor this weekend, and then the following weekend, we have parade and Christmas lights festival, and looking forward to the whole community being there.
Steve?
Sir.
Chad?
That's it.
Storm brains are all working, look like, today. Yeah. At least one in front of my house was. Matt?
Nothing.
Dana?
Nothing.
Mr. Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. When Mr. Williams brought up about trashing the right-of-way and mattresses and that, it's, I know how hard our two code enforcement officers are working, but we're getting some slippage, or we're getting overrun again with furniture. We've had a refrigerator out on Corona Avenue now for a couple of weeks. Berwin's redecorated his whole house with everything, so.
Cheaper, cheaper that way, it's a little hard to move with wet mattresses.
And Andy, I, yeah. You know, and they'll pick up the mattresses for free, there's a company that does that, you know, and, but Andy, I guess what I'm asking is that, I know we've had some conversations about it, but it's like, I think we're getting overwhelmed again, and I'm just, is there a solution?
Well, here's the thing, I was thinking about this yesterday when I saw a bunch of this. You know, every year, right after Christmas, it increases, because people get new furniture pieces or something, and they just naturally take their others out to the, to the deal.
Yeah.
You just don't drive around the right places, Kevin.
Right.
Who does that? I'm just throwing up.
Well, that's part of the concern I'm having, it just seems like we're starting to get overwhelmed, and I know that's part of code enforcement, but it's also, Public Works is around town, you know, and Parks and Rec, I mean, they do their part, but maybe we need to step that up a little bit, or at least get on waste management's case a little harder, because they're, to be part of that solution. And am I correct with that?
You're correct. And our goal to our staff is to pick up these things as soon as we become aware of it. I don't know the specific situations that you're referring to, what are those situations that staff has become aware of. Typically, yeah, staff do pick these things up and bring them to their yard, even when waste management is not able to do it on a timely basis. So, again, have to, again, look at the specific situations, why that, that has not happened.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First off, we talked about some videos, Andy, about talking about the attributes of the city, because the Robins' videos were so effective. I think that maybe if we could do something like that, where we talk about the good things in Norco and maybe get that out, I don't know if that would be part of our strategic plan or not, but I know this, this last year's been so calm, it's been really nice, but...
That is actually in the works, as we speak. We're putting together the necessary things we need to have to do to begin that. As you know, we've just recently started Measure R projects. As part of that, what we're planning on doing is have some short videos.
Just let people know what it is. And then Brian, I came here tonight, I was gonna kind of rag on you about the sandbags up in the hills, and so, this afternoon, I was just driving the hills and going, "Where's the sandbags?" And there was a guy, it was a guy with a truck, who was like taking the sandbags off the trail, and his truck was full of sandbags. And I pulled up, and I said, "Excuse me, but," I said, "What are you doing?" He goes, "Well, they don't need these." And I'm like, "You gotta put those back." Of course, you know the language he used, and he finished loading up the sandbags, and I just went, "Okay, I was gonna call you, but I figured, what the heck." So, you've got some sandbag issues up there.
You've got video cameras.
You know what, I thought about that, I should've gotten a video, but you know what, I don't know the guy, he might beat me up. Or shoot me over sandbags, I mean, because he was pretty hostile, but he had a, his pickup truck, I'll bet he had 60 or 70 of them. So, and he says, "I need them to protect my house." And I'm like, "Well, go to the fire station." And he says, "Well, I don't have time, the flood's now." And I just, I said, "Okay, whatever."
Maybe, maybe his back will go out tonight.
It's gonna hurt on feet.
Yeah.
Nope.
Okay, I got one thing, what Mr. Newton is talking there about the trash, is there any way that, like Kelly's little news alerts that comes out every week, could you maybe put that, post that on there a couple of times, put a couple of pictures and say, "Please call Waste Management." They'll, they'll pick them up on Monday if you call them and everything, and maybe it'll jar some of the people into doing it. But, one thing, close this meeting tonight with a moment of silence, Sam Maracle, he is the husband of Diane Summers, that's the captain of the Norco Mounted Posse, and you know how involved those people are in this town and communities and everything, well, he passed away this weekend in an auto accident. Well, he passed away this weekend in an auto accident, so I'd like to close this meeting in honor of him with a moment of silence. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.